We just need to look at this. All junk people, yeah. Took fifteen thousand off of the loader on their junk vehicle. Or the skid spring.
If you were a guardian, so you're the one that's not a guardian, but that your, um, that your daughter has the power of attorney for you. So it can be from you to your daughter and say power of attorney. I wonder, maybe, um, Sydney, can I help you? Sydney, right? Uh, hi. Okay, alright. This isn't what, this isn't.
You hear this, uh, over whatever they found in the dam, my ass, an additional sort of contract right here.
That, um, yeah, it's the power of attorney.
I'm going to take it out. Contracted too. So.
Are you adding on?
Project?
Yeah, yeah. From where?
From within the budget. Yeah, right, but from within the budget or where?
I, I would just add five thousand on the battery.
Out of the Flint Creek.
Yeah. From the project.
Yeah, and then if he don't spend, he don't.
Yeah. He sits in, we can act as a payment.
Right. I'll pull that. Hey, that probably fits up good.
The twenty-three, oh, in here, it'll be, uh, twenty-three ninety-nine. So if you look, you look down the numbers, it'll be the fourth digit and it'll be F C.
Okay.
So what was your number? I'm sorry. Twenty-three eight one nine. Okay, so.
Well, I just got the number here because it's sort of hard to look up.
Okay. Alright.
We can write it right on here and get it changed. So I'm looking for twenty-three ninety-nine, kids. There's twenty-two.
What, what portion of the budget are you reviewing?
We're reviewing the, uh, Flint Creek project.
Flint Creek project?
Flint Creek project.
Flint Creek project?
Yeah, okay. So, so this is what Scott was talking about. There's like fifty-two. It's gotta be transferred out of there. So you can't use that number. But if you take the fifty-two out, that's what's left, so that's what you budgeted for. That's how it turned out. Like salaries and stuff, we can't mess with. But, uh, let's go professional services, great. So we have eighteen-five in there, and we only spent twenty-five percent of that.
Nine, put twenty-three by the. Right, because of grant by.
Yeah, there. Oh, I'll bet it's under the grant. Saying that contracted services are under the grant.
Okay, but in professional services, we would add five thousand bucks, right?
No, I stayed in the, in the contracted services. I'll do it.
This is the budget, this is the budget for next year.
Right.
So you wanted to put five thousand dollars into the Flint Creek project. How did you?
To add it on, add it on to that.
To the contract.
Oh, so you need a little bit more in the grant one?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we can take, we can.
What is it? Buildings grants made to revert.
We can transfer more out of Flint Creek project into the grant. Yeah, and then just whatever you want. You want five thousand?
We don't know what.
Okay.
Just as a safety.
So, one of these, so what is this, that for? Yeah, so one of these would be, you'd have to take five away from it, I guess.
Right, so, right, so this would be five thousand instead of ten, right?
Right.
Okay. And then where would you add it back to?
So this would be, we'd be transferring out fifty-seven thousand instead of fifty-two. So, okay.
Okay.
So, right.
Chuck, did you get a look at that?
So, yeah, make sure.
Where are you transferring from?
Put it sticky on the side of that, so that's.
Out of the Flint Creek project.
From where?
Okay, hey, hey.
Where is the transfer?
I'll give you a chance here. You're not gonna get involved in this work.
I should be able to discuss any one of the things that you're talking about here.
No.
No.
Be quiet. Okay, so twenty-three ninety-nine, there's a transfer here.
This is perfect. Perfect.
Is that okay? All right. So. Uh, is there anything else you want to look at, man? So, we need to take action on the salaries.
Yeah, and, yeah.
Resolution and things are coming out together.
So that covers the complete question.
Sorry.
So we can just bring our ticket, we just have to wait until the whole thing.
Uh, well, that's, I think not till four.
Till the end.
Yeah, yeah, the first reading.
I don't want to like lose. I think we're in the future.
I have my feeling.
Are there any differences?
I guess I don't think there's something.
I don't. Let's just take a, like a sample. How about the people? Sold ways to give a computers program, just to double check.
It's in, uh, she, she put it in for, you know, for new computers and printers.
Chuck?
And then there's some money that they put in the anticipate spending on a new old back on two or three. I don't know, I can cooperate with it, but I'm serious.
Okay. Chuck, you're reviewing the, um, resolution. Have you looked at that, Scott? It's in your resolution. We'll have to do that before. Okay, so. So while you're doing that, um, it's okay with you guys. I'll take public time on this board, um, budget that we have. So we're gonna open up the public time. I think you have all the data that you need. You've got all the, um, sheets there, don't you?
I, I don't really know. I think I do, but I don't really know.
She gave you the, uh, general fund, uh, and, and all the data that changes. Is that what you're looking at?
Well, um, the, uh, as far, as far as the budget is concerned, uh, again, there's, there's none of the public officials here or the heads of the agencies here to answer any questions for it. So I, I, I think, um, it's hard to get answers from when you tell me all, in terms of, uh, where.
So are you talking the elected officials or the county, uh, like road department, uh, employees of the county?
hey, hearing, the governing shall hold a hearing in accordance with notice given pursuant to seven, one, uh, seven six dash four twenty-one, which means published in the paper per seven one twenty-one. Local government officials shall attend the budget hearing to answer questions on their proposed budget if called upon by the governing body or by a taxpayer or resident. Uh, there's nobody here to answer any questions.
Okay, so you can make an appointment with any public, uh.
No, it says that they attend the meeting. It's not a matter of making an appointment.
You can make an appointment like the sheriff.
That's not, that's not the way the budget's supposed to conduct.
You're not gonna talk, you're not gonna talk to our employees and question them directly. You can, we, they work for us, so you can ask us those questions. That's what we're here for.
Again, you're not complying with the law. The law says the same.
Well, we're gonna have a discussion about preliminary.
Need to leave your comment to political comment, not legal comment.
Okay. I have a.
This is, this is, this is what it says in the law. It's that there's something about it, but, uh, I'm misunderstanding.
I'm not, I'm not gonna comment on the law.
Okay, that's it. I have, do you mind?
To, to hear everything. I'm not invited to being here?
Well, why aren't the other heads of the agencies here?
Why do we need them? Who do you want to doctor?
All right, I have a question, if you don't mind. As far as the Philsburg ambulance, okay? Um, on the revenue budget, this is, is this have all the money they take in when they make their, uh, service, you know, and they get, the person gets a, a bill for being picked up by the ambulance? Where does that go? The cost for that ambulance service?
Well, it should be part of their revenues and.
Okay, so where is it on there?
Well, there's another sheet as far as revenues go. You're looking at what we've budgeted for, um, this year, and you can see what we budgeted last year.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking at the, uh, revenue budget report, and this is for the year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And it has the current budget and the preliminary budget and the budget change and the final budget. And that's what I'm looking at, and that's the question I have. Where is the money that, uh, the Philsburg ambulance brought in for picking up people?
It wouldn't show it on this document. It would show it on the revenue side. Did you pick that up?
I, I'm looking at the revenue budget report. Is there something different? I thought that's the revenue budget.
You're, you're needing to see what, how much they got paid for.
Yeah, wouldn't it be on that page, the revenue budget?
No, it wouldn't be. There's a separate page she split about.
Okay, so.
So there's one revenue and there's one for, um, you know, like you said, the whole budget, final budget, budget changes, but it wouldn't show the revenues they brought in last year on that document.
Well, wouldn't that be added to the budget for?
No.
Last year?
Starts over again.
What am I looking for at then? Do they?
It could be, it could be put into a capital account, um.
Well, then we don't know, right? Shouldn't the person be here? They're the one that handles this to know where this money is?
Yeah, we can show you how much they, is, is your question, how much did they bring in last year?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, first of all, I don't even know who is in charge of the ambulance association.
It's a different document.
Who does the billing? I don't even know any of that. So where is, where's that information, I'm asking?
On the revenues.
Okay, what page is that on in the revenue?
Right here.
Okay.
Patrick Little's the president of the Philsburg Ambulance Association, and Frank Prance is the Drummond Ambulance Association.
Okay. See, that, that information isn't online and, uh, so he, does he handle the billing? Patrick Little?
Well, yeah, they do trip reports and they go into a contractor that does the billing for them, and then the money, the, uh, councilor's simple come back to look and report.
Okay, so where's that information on here?
Well, I'm looking for the revenue now, have, I'm looking the same thing you're looking at, and that's not the same document. That's not where the revenues are reflected.
Okay. So that should be there, shouldn't it?
Well, it is. It's just not.
It's not here.
This document.
It's not part of the, their fund is not part of their budget.
Right. This is their budget you're looking at, not.
But it brings in revenue, right? So where is that?
The budget is the plan for the coming year, not, not the fund. So that'd be on a separate document, Scott.
Does that go into the general fund? I mean, the money's gotta go somewhere, doesn't it?
She'll show you where it goes. They can actually use some of that money for capital.
Yeah, I know, I mean, it's like anything that brings in money.
The Philsburg ambulance is paying the commissioners back for the difference of what they planned to spend on the building and what they spent. So there's a, there's a, there's a transfer, uh, money out of their budget going back to pay off the PIL account for the overages on their building. So that's, that's a chunk of it. And, and, uh, all, all can decide. Drummond probably bills, geez, eighty percent more than, uh, Philsburg has. We've really been struggling with the Philsburg ambulance.
Okay, so.
They haven't gone on that many runs, that's why.
Well, yeah, I've heard about that with, with Drummond. So Drummond isn't on this page either?
Drummond's, uh, budget is, um.
Looks like it's on the next page.
Next page, five of twenty. Now, that's what they're expected to spend this year. That's their budget for this year.
Now, this is a.
Oh, okay, sorry.
She said, a lot of times it's just a total on the budget. We don't have to break it right down. It's on the page that's here.
Oh, okay.
What number was that?
She's asking about the Philsburg ambulance is twenty-two thirty.
Twenty-two thirty is, twenty-two thirty?
Philsburg.
That's the revenue they brought in for the?
No, no, that, that's a budget number. They're looking up to see if we can figure out the revenue. They may be all combined together, you said?
Why, why doesn't the revenue, uh, from, from the billing part of the ambulance budget? You say you have revenue that's generated by the ambulance for transporting. Why isn't that part of the revenue for the ambulance budget?
Um, because it goes in the general fund, and then there's a new budget the next year, unless they request some of that money to be held back for capital improvements, like a new ambulance service.
Why does it go to the general fund and not, and not the ambulance fund?
Because that's the law.
Why would we put it in general fund if the ambulance needs it?
Well, we can do, but it comes back to, it comes back to the general fund.
Well, if you got a grant for the ambulance or they got a grant for some reason, like their building, wouldn't that go into their budget?
Yes.
Well, that's money going into their budget on how they would spend it.
But that is not the way she accounts for it.
Okay, so that's, okay, so that's, goes into the general fund.
So the ambulance exceeded their budget last year. How, how does that affect the budget for this year?
Uh, that's a good question. Philsburg ambulance, just Philsburg exceeded their building that had saved up.
Is this what you're looking for?
Oh, that should be in here, shouldn't it? This is just a draft.
This is the way we broke it down, though. I thought that's what you were talking about.
You know, that's the expenditures, right? These are expenditures, where they're spending for all the, I want the revenue. See the revenue that's coming in?
Cash that we anticipated that much is what's coming in, because they haven't done nothing. They don't.
Yeah, I agree, but see, that's a draft, like you said, and this is the completed preliminary, and that information should be in here somewhere.
It was gonna cost so much.
That's basically what this thing is.
Some of it was contracted, some of it was donated.
Okay, thank you.
At the end of the day, they didn't.
Yeah, that should be in here. Thank you.
And we had warrants for contractors, and we said, God, what's going on? We brought them in, we had an audit. We hired an auditor to audit what they'd done, and we figured out, oh my God, it's more than they told us. Uh, we reached very agreement with them to say, all right, we'll finish this building because it's an emergency service building. This is all done publicly, we did it right here. And we said, well, we'll do it, but you're gonna pay it back over three years, I think it is. And that's how.
We take it right off the top, right? Every year we take it right exactly out, so we get it back to pay back to the people who took it out.
If that, to be honest with you, wasn't an emergency service, I don't think the commission would have handled it that way, but they, they wanted to finish the ambulance building to provide emergency services, and then, and, and that's the way we decided to do it.
One thing was we needed somewhere to park their ambulances. We couldn't, they were sitting outside and borrowing some spots, and we had them up at the road department, and one got hit by something, so I mean, it's, they need to be where they're supposed to be, where all their stuff is, so that's why we figured that they finished that.
It wasn't, it wasn't an emergency, was it?
Yeah, it was.
How do you consider that an emergency?
Because they wouldn't start. Mr. Adder was just telling them they were parking outside. It wasn't, uh, it wouldn't fit in this building.
All their stuff, it's inside of a heated building, which some of ours aren't heated yet, and so that way their medicine's all, when they come to. Well, I'm just saying that their medicine has to meet a rig, and then they gotta have them plugged in, because their medicine's gotta be at a certain temperature. And why did we leave them, when it should have built?
Well, here again, it seems to me that, that they should have had a capital expenditure determined on the budget.
They did, then they overspent.
And they overspent the appropriation?
Yep.
Uh, who, who's responsible for that?
Volunteers.
Well.
And so that's another issue.
Are you responsible for the overture, or are they responsible?
At the end of the day, I suppose we are, and that's how we handled it.
That's why we went ahead and go, we got it done, now they're good, going to pay us back.
It was, it, it was so, I mean, because you had this mixture of, of contracted services, and then you had, uh, people donating things, it was so convoluted. We actually had to hire an auditor to go through and say, all right, you know, what do they owe, what's, you know, given to them, and what's gonna cost to finish this project?
Yeah, the error was noted in the audit, and that, that's the way it was corrected.
Right.
Wasn't that error pointed out in the previous year? So we had that previous year, they exceeded their budget, and then last year they exceeded their budget.
Well, I think it was, but you gotta remember though, audit's done in June, and so it would only be reflected the next year.
Plus all the papers, that we didn't get every, all the receipts, we were supposed to, we had to.
Substantive, they exceeded their budget.
Exceeded in one year, two audits did discuss it, but then it's been corrected by the, by the resolution, right, the payback, right, though.
Well, uh, was there public meetings?
It's all done in public, yes. We had the ambulance people here, uh, the auditor was here. It's in the audit report.
Was there anything published in the paper? The audit report was from.
There was made articles in the paper about.
Previous year, right?
Two to three articles. The, uh, the paper was here and reported on it.
Well.
What do you, what do you need to know?
Well, what I need to know is, uh, that they exceeded their appropriation, and you're saying that they did exceed their appropriation. And so, uh, I, uh, and you were at fault for, um.
If that's how you feel.
Allowing the appropriation.
If that's how you feel.
Since this thing went over a two-year period of building the ambulance building, uh, I still find it very hard to understand how you can consider that an emergency.
Well, that's what we get elected to do. We get elected to make those decisions, so we did.
So, and again, there was no appropriation. They exceeded their appropriation.
There was appropriation, they exceeded their appropriation.
Okay.
They actually planned this for like five years to build this building, and they were saving money to do it.
Bill Dierke started it.
Yeah.
So, uh, there is a limitation on the, on expenditures of, uh, uh, exceeding the appropriations, but in effect, you were the ones that did that.
Yeah, as soon as it was audited and we figured out what they'd done, uh, we, uh, set out and negotiated the best way we could to find out how to solve it, and they're paying us back every year. It's automatic until it's paid for.
Well, do you have, do you have anything in the budget for an emergency appropriation fund?
Yeah, it's called PIL, general fund money.
PIL money is an emergency fund?
Yeah, it's, in this county, it's used for a safety.
Well, uh, so, again, you're saying that the PIL funds are, uh, what did you call it, rainy day fund?
Yeah, or, uh, you know, if we need, if we absolutely need it for, you know, public safety or a disaster, yeah, that's, we can use it for that.
Well, uh, when you applied, uh, for the PIL fund, did you specify what the operations were gonna be, uh, paid for by, by the application?
I guess I don't understand what this actually was.
Well, I don't understand why you continue to use the PIL fund.
We don't make an application for.
It's a statutory payment.
Statutory payment. It, it's based on a, it's calculated on the number of federal acres, acreage within the county. It's calculated. Congress makes an appropriation, and it comes down, and it's split out, uh, to the counties by the amount of federal acreage within the county. We never make an application.
No, but you received the money by June, so you, you know how much money's there, and it's available, and it should be used for the county services.
What county services?
For the county services.
What county services?
Yeah, yeah, so like, like the ambulance.
That's what we're discussing right now.
No, you're right, like the ambulance.
Yeah, but it's supposed to be done at budget preparation time, not after the fact.
Ideally, you're probably actually accurate there, but, uh, you know, it's like you said the other day, that we didn't appropriate money to pay, uh, the prosecution of the guy that tried to kill our sheriff. Well, it's hard to appropriate for a gunfight. We don't know when they're gonna happen, and when they happen, there's all kinds of issues that go on afterwards. That's what. And we have every single right and responsibility to use PIL money when we have to, uh, for those kinds of issues and emergencies, wherever you want it.
So you guys could, yeah, you guys can do a budget for your own PIL.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I encourage you to, look at potentially, it's hard to anticipate, but you could.
Well, I mean, if it's a safety, and it's always been used as a safety net for the county, it'd be hard to list all those things, I guess we could.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, I mean, it's, that, and that's what a.
Gunfight, twenty-five thousand bucks. Gunfight, twenty-five thousand bucks, and we just don't know.
I have a question.
It's fine.
Can you?
So you're saying you don't have to, you receive the revenues from the PIL money, but you're saying you don't have to budget for, for the PIL money on how it's gonna be spent? Shouldn't there be some kind of, um, budget for that?
You know, I.
It's a source of revenue.
Exactly, but we, you know, we're keeping it, we don't wanna spend it. I mean, I guess I'm speaking for two of the guys.
So in effect, you're overtaxing the people in the county.
Well, you know where the money comes from? It comes from the federal government.
It's supposed to be used for the county services, the, and the county services are the business of the people. So the money should go to the budget.
Why would you want us to hold something?
Huh?
Why would you want us to hold it or keep it for a rainy day?
Because you're using it as a slush fund and you're using it to cover up for everything that's a, where they exceed their appropriations or they haven't budgeted for it.
But that, your slush fund sounds like, define that. It's not a slush fund. It's not a slush fund. We use, we just explained to you. We don't use it until we absolutely need it for emergencies.
An emergency?
Yeah, or, exactly.
Well, I'm looking at it, and I'm saying that you use it for just about anything that you want to use to satisfy some government agency. Did most of the money from the PILT funds?
We decided to spend that money.
Pardon?
We decided not to have the trial here. We decided to go with combining the trial of the murder count. We could have said, Mr. Commissioner, we want to have it here, but it would have cost real bad. We thought it was good public policy to do what we did.
Should that be your decision?
It is our decision.
Why is it, why is it prosecutions are your decision?
Paying for them all.
Yeah, that's correct.
Paying for it, yes.
They control the purse.
So, then why didn't you charge the county attorney's budget?
So, that's what.
Rather than the PILT funds, why didn't you charge the county attorney's budget?
They couldn't, they couldn't.
We could have, well, we didn't. You know, we looked at this budget. It runs pretty tight ship. We had a lot of year left, so we did what we did.
Well, you could have put it in the, from the PILT to the county attorney's fund, since it is a prosecution. And that's the way, it would have been better than just doing it from PILT to another account.
We're not opinionated.
Okay, we'll see about, we'll have, we'll clarification. You're going to approve this preliminary budget the next hour, right? Okay. Once it's approved, it's a done deal. Is that correct? That's the budget, finished, done. A month from now, I come up and I say, hey, I made a mistake. I need more money. I'm the public nurse. I need more money. I went over on my budget. Where are you going to get that money from? And how are you going to do it?
Well, we're general, we're going to be in a budget.
I'm sorry?
We could say, A, no. B, we'll find it within their budget, which we can do. Help them do that, find it within the budget.
Okay.
You know, you're absolutely right. Like, for example, I mean, the sheriff, when we approve his budget, he is an elected official. We don't go back and micro-manage his budget. It's his budget. If he does really good things with his budget, God bless him. If he does really bad things, then you get to maybe vote him out of office. But that's his budget.
Okay, but I'm talking about, I'm not an elected official, okay? Somebody else, like the nurse, the public nurse.
Yes.
And I overspent, like a case last year, overspent the budget. What do you do then? And what was the process that you followed? After the budget is, is done?
We can look into the general and amended budget on that same.
Okay, and how do you do that? How do you amend the budget?
There's a whole process.
I'm sorry, bye? I know there's a process.
A resolution.
A resolution. Right, to amend the budget. And that's a resolution.
There's also reserves too. Like, the projected reserves are six hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-two. So, that's exact, that's why, yeah.
Well, the way that works, if you're going to use the reserves, what you do is you let that line item go into the negative, okay? And, you know, you might bring in the department head and say, you're done, don't spend any more out. You know, but you're, like you said, they'd already overspent, right? So, you just let it go to the negatives to the end of the year. And then you take, you sweep the reserves, and look at all the reserves and sweep them and go pay that off so it's zero, okay? And then lots of times, you've got to look and say, gee, maybe that's going to happen again next year, and it's important for it to happen. Then you add that more, much more into their budget. So, you try to get them to go to zero. What you're trying to do at the end of the day with those folks is get all their line items to end in zero, not minus. And they, what happens is, in this county, if you look at all the budgets at the end of the year, they're always in the plus side. They don't expend, they might expend line items at a hundred and twelve percent of one line item, but then the next one, they only spent ninety, or they don't spend eighty. So, the total budget has cash in it. There's money in it.
But you have to do an emotion.
Yes.
At a public hearing.
To move those line items.
To amend the budget.
Yeah.
To, a public hearing to amend the overall budget?
Oh, yeah, not the, within the budget, you know.
Within individual offices' budget?
You know.
Would not have to be a public hearing.
But it would have to be a resolution, on the agenda, as a resolution.
You know, I don't think we have to if it's within that budget.
Bill, this is the thing. It's, I don't think he thinks, and all this other stuff. There is no consistency, and it is confusing. I'm sorry, it's confusing, okay? One time we do a resolution, one time we don't. What is the definition of a public meeting and a public hearing? Do you have that?
So, a...
So, we're talking about the budget here. We're trying to explain to you as painfully as we can.
Well, it's a very simple answer. Is there a resolution that has to be done at a public meeting and on the agenda? That's a simple question.
The answer's no.
You're saying no.
Right.
So, the distinction that you're getting into is a formal resolution versus an informal one. Any, any motion that they pass that's in the minutes is a resolution. And so, there can be, if it's a formal one in writing, it's just making it more, might be more clear that way. And I understand your point. Next time, we could, yeah, we could do that.
Well, we always make a motion to move stuff within the budget. But a motion is a resolution, always, isn't it?
Yeah, a motion, I would define a motion, a pass motion is a resolution.
Okay, okay.
Because with the ambulance, I think it was January, when all they had was twenty-five thousand, five hundred in their budget. And it had to do with completing or working on the garage. And there was a meeting, and we needed over a hundred thousand, I believe. And it was a discussion that you were going to do it in parts. And so, I think, who was it? Pat, Pat Little said, or the contractor said, no, it has to be done all at once. And so, a resolution was done, twenty nineteen, whatever it was. And it was the first hearing, reading, I think, to take the money out of PILT. So, that was a resolution.
Yep.
Okay, well, so, there's a resolution. It was on the agenda to take money from PILT funds to put it into the ambulance budget for the building of the garage.
To finish the road.
Okay, so then how come sometimes you don't do that? And how come, you know, you don't show that as a resolution?
Because sometimes, as you just explained, the shortfall can be handled within that budget. Not, we don't have to go out and build or another budget, right? And it's, it can be handled within that budget.
That's one, yeah, that's one example.
Line item change.
It's just one line item that's overspent, not the whole budget.
So, if you only have twenty-five thousand dollars in your budget, and you've got to get in there a hundred and something thousand dollars to work on this garage, you just let it go minus the twenty-five thousand from the hundred thousand, and then have a minus seventy-five thousand?
You're destroying what I'm saying.
No, that's what I'm thinking you're saying.
So, let's just take the sheriff again, okay? Let's say he, he overexpends a line item in his budget. He wrecks three patrol cars in a book.
But he's an elected official, just like you guys are. Okay, we're not talking about that.
Okay. So, you're ready to make a difference, handle it some way. He could go down in his budget and find other monies to, at the end of the day, come off zero within his budget.
Yeah, that's his budget.
He wouldn't be personally liable for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But usually, in the situation like he comes in, he goes, hey, look, I got the money to do this, it's just another line item.
Yeah, but, but he's an elected official. That's his budget. You're the elected officials. This is your budget, the general, and everybody else is under your oversight, overseeing, overseeing. And it's your approval or non-approval. So, then you're the guys that are responsible for it, right? Okay, and so, there would be a resolution saying, this is what we did, and agreement with each other. And it would be a public meeting. I mean, as far as being on the agenda. Am I right or wrong?
PILT money, I think in the future, we could always do, always do a written resolution. I mean, but...
But you'd have to check that as the county attorney regarding the law, right? Because that's what you said. It has to...
Yeah, I think that's advisable, and that would clear up any confusion there.
But Blaine, aren't there codes that they have to follow regarding these things? I mean, you know, it's not just their decision. You know, you guys, you know, you're a...
They went through the audit, and I know everything came out.
You know what? There's a difference between a general government and a self-governing. And I think that's the problem in this county, is going back sometime, there's confusion regarding self-governing and a general-type governing. Two different sets of rules apply. And you've got to abide by the Montana codes annotated, from what I understand. And not make up your own accounting policies and procedures.
We, we get audited, audited.
Well, that's why it should be, you know...
We spend a lot of time with the auditor going over, what's the best practice?
Right.
This man had a better practice. So, next year, I'm going to do a better practice. So, and I think Commissioner Adder's discussion about this document is pretty good. Here's why. Because he looks at all those transactions, every one of them. And he tells us, eh, it's probably not the best way to do that. I'd like to see you do it this way. And we go, all right, we're correct. So, every year, we go back through all those transactions, the one that Dick was talking about, the ones you're talking about, and say, so, is there a better way to do this? But overall, if you read the last two pages, it's done properly. Nothing. We're, there's no exception here that says that. I find an exception, that they shouldn't have done, taken money from PILT, for example, and paid for the ambulance barn finished. He noted that. He noted what we did, and he said it was fine.
He's an independent accountant, whatever you call him?
He is.
And you hired him?
But we just paid for it, but he's independent. His report's not to let.
Okay, so, he works for you.
It's to the state of Montana. Believe me, if he didn't have an exception, he would have noted it. Because that's how he, you know, you know, we have to pay for it, but he doesn't work for us. He works and gives this report to the state of Montana.
One more thing, because I think it's getting to the end of this, and this...
Isn't his audit point on the last page in there, the last couple pages?
Yep.
Last week, at that, on the tenth, it was a public hearing for the newspaper. And I read it for the record, but I don't see it in the minutes from last week that you approved. And for this record, I'm going to, although nobody's here, I guess you're doing it electronically. Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, you're getting skinny. I can't see you. Uh, well, he's not typing, but we're doing, I guess it's electronically. That's okay. But here, I'm going to read it again. This was in the newspaper, okay? And this was in the August twenty-ninth newspaper. Notice, in accordance with the laws of the state of Montana, the Board of County Commissioners of Granite County, Montana, has completed the preliminary budget for the current fiscal year. And the same has been placed on file for inspection in the office of the clerk recorder, clerk, county clerk and recorder. The board, that's you, I assume, has set Tuesday, September tenth, from two PM to four PM, and Tuesday, September seventeenth today, from two PM to four PM, at their office in the courthouse for the purpose of conducting a public hearing on the budget and shall be conducted and the budget approved and adopted on Tuesday, September seventeenth, at four o'clock. Any taxpayer or resident may appear at the meeting and be heard for or against any part of the proposed budget. That's two, two meetings. And it applies to both meetings. Now, you said at that, oh, I think it was the ninth, at that work meeting, budget work meeting, that the newspaper was wrong. Well, if the newspaper is wrong, and this was in twice, two newspapers, then are you, why haven't you put the completed budget information again in the newspaper for two more public hearings? Because looking at what you've done, you don't know what page things are on. You kept going and getting more information. You had to get, I mean, this should have been all done for the preliminary hearing.
The, the, saying it's preliminary, it's a word, it's still a working document, though. Put, having two more hearings on it would, then they would be behind violation of statute because it wouldn't be getting, it wouldn't get it done on time.
Well, everybody else got it, got it done on time, Blaine. They all have it done. Even Phillipsburg has it done a couple of weeks ago.
But it's still, I think, I think it's still working in that, like, the issue of the hole in the dam or whatever, I mean, that was unanticipated. So, I agree, it's supposed to be a good working document, but it was to what they, what they had there. So, I don't see that, I don't see you guys violating the law there.
I didn't, no.
It should be as complete as, as the...
I didn't say violating the law. I am saying that, you're saying that this is a preliminary budget. And according to the article in the newspaper, the notice, it's been completed. So, the public can see it and read it, and like we're doing now. This is a completion. And all you're waiting for to do is to approve it in the next hour. So, that makes it an approved budget for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, whatever the years are. And that's why I said, next week or next month, if I'm at a department head and I come over, we're not going to go through this again, are we? Saying, oh, wait, let's look this, let's, no. It's going to be, your budget said this, you're overspending it. We'll take it from PILT or the general fund, and we're going to do a resolution to do it. And it's on the agenda for a meeting to do it that way. Because Blaine, I disagree with you. It's not, this is done. At four o'clock, this is going to be approved.
But that's the final budget. Whereas that was talking about, there's a process where they complete the preliminary. But that's still a, the preliminary is still a working document.
That's right.
So, that, that's why I don't think there needs to be more public hearings. And the difference between a public meeting and a public hearing is a, a public meeting is a, a public hearing is a type of public meeting, but it's the way it's noticed. And there's time for public comment.
And this was noticed in the paper.
There's time for public comment.
And this was put, noticed in the newspaper. But one of the things that, and Sarah is new. She should have put the code on it, as per she's stating the laws of the state of Montana. And the code should have been there. And everything under those code, that particular code, will say exactly how the meeting is conducted and everything else that goes along with it. And again, this is, this is not a work in progress. Once you approve it, it's done.
Well, in a first one, but it was earlier, going back and forth. The commissioners, you know, have gone through all this, okay, ninety-nine percent. There were things that Commissioner Hinckley, Commissioner Adder wanted changed. We gave it back to Sarah. She had to put them in the system and in the firm and do the dollar and cents. We hadn't seen those since, the first time we saw them was this morning, okay? So, then when, when the time came, we made sure that the changes on the project, the way Commissioner Hinckley wanted to look at it, so we knew how much was left over at the end of the day. One example that you had was, geez, a change to, was it solid waste or junk vehicle to make sure that they took out some money in the capital of junk to buy a piece of equipment? of equipment. So, that's what we were doing, going back and forth, was just, you know, looking and making sure those changes were done the way we asked her to do.
And that was this morning?
And we felt that, well, that's what we did at, uh, at 1:00, 2:00, I'm sorry, 2:00. That's what you saw, where the commissioners making sure their changes that they'd made in a previous work session were, were reflecting in this budget.
That's the correct process between a preliminary and a final, because you guys stick with the preliminary one all along, then you're not taking into consideration potential changes or what the fuck is saying, so.
Exactly.
Okay, 'cause, uh, looking at the agenda for today, at 9:45 a.m., Patrick Little, Phillipsburg Ambulance Budget and Billing Discussion.
He didn't show.
But what have he had? And there's gonna, what was he, a budget and billing? And if he had shown, what would that mean? That you would've changed this again?
No, unlikely. What we were gonna do was go over with a, you know, reminding that the, what was coming out of there was to pay off the bill money used to do it, and the other thing was, to get a little more information, why is the billing, where, and, the, the third thing was, they're not responding to calls.
Oh, so that was like, my question, the billing, the revenue, and all that other stuff, would've been the, so he hasn't answered that question, but this is completed.
He was supposed to be here, like, last, last week, and he was in a show, so we put him on for this week.
He might've quit.
Yeah, we don't know what happened, he's not here.
He's not even on the call, so he might've quit, he might've fed up with all this stuff.
And remember, he is a volunteer.
Well, I was surprised to find out...
He is a volunteer.
I, I was surprised that, uh...
They have lives too, Elaine, and they get tired, everybody, and, like that ambulance, everybody's coming down on him, and I said, and he, you know...
I was surprised that Malheur resigned, that was a surprise.
Can I finish, please?
That was a surprise, that she resigned. That's interesting. Now, you're giving me a bunch of, you know, I, I wanna know, you know, you fi, you have to follow certain codes and rules and stuff like that, and I'm the public, and I'm confused, because it says one thing in the newspaper, and something else happened, and you're still discussing, but this looks like a work session, which you did this morning, which you did last week.
The newspaper is always...
You know, so, I don't know.
I don't believe I've ever been hiring for the newspaper, do you?
Pardon?
I don't believe I've ever been thinking I've read the newspaper.
Then why didn't you correct it? Somebody's paid for this, being in the notice and the newspaper.
Other articles in the newspaper.
But you told me this was wrong. You said that the notice was wrong, as, and we went inside, you went inside to read it, remember?
Yeah.
And that's when I got a copy and I read it, for the record.
Well, Sarah gave, Sarah, chopping that language, and I, that's a opinion I gave, that's the, the way they've handled it, is the best way to, I think, what is, yeah, the only way to fall through is the codes as written. So, I think, if there's any issues, it's the code is a little, not, not helping you out, but, I mean, you guys have followed that the best, best you can, you know? The way everyone else, uh, every other jurisdiction does is not more, I believe.
See, Blaine, you know that I, I love working with you and stopping you answer my questions. And again, if there's a, something vague, or about a code or something, and you say it is, then, or what they do, you get an opinion on it, right? Or an advice?
Well, but they're, the way that they're doing it is the only way to complete this within the, within the timeframe. The preliminary budget's gotta be under that, that code, it's just a working, a working preliminary budget. To say that, um, that it's not a work in progress, to me, wouldn't make sense, because public, unanticipated things come up, so it's gonna be working, uh, preliminary budget up until the point that it's the final budget.
Mm-huh.
And I, I know that, uh, that's the only way I can interpret that code, to make it, make it work.
And I, I just think that, um, they, this should've been all done. Basically, the prelimi, the work session should've been done a while ago, and all this, like, the other, I use Phillipsburg, the town of Phillipsburg, as an example, because they, they had it up online, or a couple of weeks ago, so the people can look at it, and then they had their public hearings, and, and so, anything that was brought up, it was corrected, and then the final was presented, and they voted on it, and it became the final budget. And why didn't the county have that same procedure and get it done on time? That was my crus, question, for the record. 'Cause now, this is, the way this is being handled today, you don't know which paper it is, and you don't know what, I mean, that you got in, went inside and asked Sarah, and I'm just saying, it, there must be, people have been doing this for years, county budgets, and there's gotta be a smoother way of doing it, other counties do it that way. So, for the record, that's all I'm saying. This is not a way to run a county.
The idea of having it online, probably good, but still, just, the, still, to me, would be a preliminary draft, it's gonna be a working draft.
Right. And then there would've been the two public hearings, and then it would've been done.
Well, uh, I believe it's the county board's responsibility to put the notice in the paper. If you didn't like the notice that she put in, uh, that doesn't matter, it's your responsibility. Uh, the, uh, other thing that I have a question on is, uh, on June 1st, the clerk and recorder is supposed to notify all of the components or agencies that the budgets are due, uh, that they're supposed to submit preliminary budgets by June 10th. Yeah, she has that, uh, she has that all this period of time. There's absolutely no reason why that information couldn't be, uh, put into the spreadsheet and put up on the internet as a way for the people to know and participate i- in the budget hearing. Uh, it's a very simple thing to do, I think that, uh, that would be giving adequate notice to the people, that this is what we're gonna be talking about in the budget, uh, in the preliminary budget. Uh, the, uh, this whole concept where you're closing the meeting and saying the public isn't allowed to participate is, uh, just wrong, in my estimation, violates the constitutional right, you know, for the people to know and participate. So, I think that what you should be doing on these budgets, uh, is, right after June 10th, they should be up there, it should maybe take a couple of days to post those figures, but there's absolutely no reason why those figures couldn't be up there, so that people could review it. Coming in there and trying to review these figures, and then finding out, she doesn't have them, you have them, you're saying, you don't have them, they have them, uh, and the time that it takes in order to come in here, this is totally ridiculous, it's, uh, it's not adequate notice. You have the computer tech, tech, technology that's available to you now, and you should be providing it on, on the internet space, yeah.
So, not, not, not legally required, because if it's, but if it's stuff that you need and come in and ask Sarah for, if Sarah has it, then it should be provided, but I'm, I'm not a, I'm not against the idea of putting it online. In fact, I think we're working towards, uh, getting, I think the county's web server or another one would allow, maybe allow us to put it on there, uh, like each individual department, maybe a little easier.
Well, you look at the complexity of the document, uh, there's no way anybody can just come in, look at what she has up there, and absorb it all within a 10-minute period of time, or whatever, and, and, for them, they should be able to look at it ahead of time. It's like I was asking earlier, I said, what portion of the budget are you referring to? Uh, I have no way of knowing, and I still don't know what they were talking about, okay? Just to even page through this thing to find out what part of, uh, I think is, uh, effectively, the people don't know what you're talking about.
Nobody's in here.
Hmm?
Nobody's in here.
Maybe because they just don't bother anymore.
No, there's a reason.
No, he said, nobody's in here, nobody's here.
You can't bring up the public.
Yeah.
Well, that's another part of it, I think that, effectively, you're not giving adequate notice. Uh, you're just, you're just publishing a notice in the newspaper saying that you're gonna have a meeting, uh, but the, the, uh, the meeting, the agenda should be published in the newspaper. Why not?
Well, we'll go back to the whole argument.
Yeah, yeah, about that.
Well, it's, uh, the old argument.
You guys keep bringing up the old and old, and try to make it better.
And you, you don't seem to be paying any attention to it, uh, what, uh...
To me, hopefully, in the, the next year, potentially, we'd be able to, or County Attorney could put his own budget up on there, if, I mean, that might be the way that it's going out, so that'd be possible.
I don't think the county attorney would put us, you would submit your budget to the clerk and recorder, and the clerk and recorder would put all of the, uh, component budgets up on the internet.
Or Sarah would have easier access to do that. Uh, that'd maybe, yeah.
Well, it would, uh, uh, well, theoretically speaking, for you to submit your budget to her, it would be easier if you did it on a spreadsheet format, in a, on a, on a, on a computer. And she, for all practical purposes, she wouldn't have to enter the information, she could just put your information up there.
Do that too, but PDFs, easy to post on there too, either way.
Just for a point of clarification, as long as you have that, as long as Mike has that, she's on the computer too. This stu, there's a lot of information that's on the computer, and there's no reason why the three of you can't have a computer in front of you, and you can follow these things. That's very good. So, why do we have all this paper, and you're confused as to where...
I don't have one, I guess.
I mean, this, to me, and, so why do we have all this paper?
Because that's how much provided was by the court.
But you should have it online, because she's gonna have it online, and that should be put online, just like Mike has have that, that information, it's online now.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you know, I, back in the beginning of the year, I said, hey, you look at some of these people, you've got the wrong IP server, or whatever, software, because this is done. I don't even know as much as I, about a computer, but I can put up a webpage for you and have all that information on, it's no big deal. But apparently, it is a big deal, I don't know.
So, the, um, county's web server is looking, I mean, having it, expand, or, uh, having it where that could be done. That Civic Plus, the other, one of the competitors, I've called them, they haven't called me back, because we'd be asking, uh, we're gonna ask them to potentially come in, so we're still looking at them.
Well, you have, you have the, you have the figures available by June 10th, let's just say they're posted by June 15th, or something like that. Why does it take you from June 15th to September 17th in order to, uh, bring the, bring the budget hearing before the...
They changed the, before the...
They're gonna bring this up.
Because, uh, the, the county, that's just a, uh, almost a, well, I mean, the county officials are doing a proposed budget on what they need, but the county does not know what the knowledge is, and so...
At this, at this particular point, for the preliminary budget, you don't know, need to know what the valuations are. You can get up, and you can discuss the budget as it's proposed by the different components, uh, and there's no reason to have the valuation. Valuation is required at, at the fun, at the final budget.
Commission wanted to look at it earlier, they could.
Well, it's a bit late for the quarter, I think it's an opportunity to talk different things, but she had her hands on getting to us what she got to us, because, you know, she said, Mike, I can let you have that stuff until I get the evaluations, and the valuations you put back, and, uh...
This is a, a very complicated process. If you have a spreadsheet, she's already got an existing spreadsheet with five previous years there, uh, she can just add the figures that the components were provided, and put it in there, it shouldn't, shouldn't take her more than a day, uh, at the very moment. And for that, and then, again, if you wanna look at what's supposed to happen, it's supposed to be completed by, uh, September, uh, seven, what would've been, September 7th, and here you are, still messing around with it, and it hasn't been completed, and, uh, it's a more, uh...
So, it's, um, or 30 days from the date that the county's given that information.
But you should've...
They could discuss it earlier, that's their decision.
Yeah, that's their decision.
The valuation was provided by August 2nd, so you should've had it done. They paid, they made an adjustment to it, but, uh, here again, that shouldn't have affected the, uh, the preliminary operating budgets, or whatever, component budget. They should've known by that, this time, should've been well discussed, what, what any changes are gonna be. So, if it was a matter of just re-computing the tax valuation, she, she could take, she could either take, uh, the original, uh, original, uh, valuation, and use that as, as a next, uh, projection of what the taxes are gonna be. When she came in with the adjustment, if you could, if you weren't able to complete the budget, you should've gone in and asked for a, an extension of time to complete the budget.
So, what that wasn't required, again, the commission could, I guess, discuss those issues on, on public meetings differently, but, uh, that'd be...
Well, what, what is required is that you have it completed by that point, by the time, and it wasn't completed.
It isn't till 7th, it's 30 days, yes.
Yeah, they amended the, they amended that, they, they've given additional time.
Right. Again, the valuation is for you to come up with the tax levy, and it isn't, it isn't even part of the preliminary budget for your operating component. You can, you can review that, you could've reviewed it two, three months ago.
I'm not disputing that.
All right, that's it.
And, um, I'd just leave that to the commission's decision.
Well, then, the commissioners, why, why do you wait until it passes?
Our discussions with the workload of the, uh, the workload of the quarter was, that's the time period where she wanted to do, only said yes.
Okay.
If it doesn't satisfy the restriction, and not...
You know, you asked a question, I tried to answer, if you don't like the answer, that's not...
Okay, well, I don't like the answer.
Okay, for the record, you don't, that's it.
I'm just trying, every time that we try to answer a question, you go to another problem, another problem. It's just really hard to deal with.
It seems to me you always come up with a convoluted explanation.
Well, it's nothing convoluted, we had discussions with Sarah, go talk to her.
What you did versus what you should've been doing.
Well, what you think we should've been doing, and what we do, is an opinion, yours. You know, and, no, we're not perfect, nobody says we are, but, you know, we're, we're sitting here doing the very best we can, and we have. Just because you have an opinion, you don't like the way we do anything, or how we do it, or by the time we get it done, fine, you can have that opinion.
You can run for this office.
You can run for the office.
But, you know, it's...
You know, if there's not a big throng of other people saying, jeez, you guys British, where are they? I don't see you.
Two people, two are the only ones that ever come in and complain this.
Well, when the people find...
I'm talking, thank you, why do you always tell me?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead. Well, I'm the public, go ahead, go ahead, talk.
I can't.
Go ahead, talk. No, see, this is what you do.
So, let's...
When the public knows that there's a meeting taking place here, I've seen this place packed, packed, and I can go on the few going back to 2017, the times that October comes to mind.
Okay, well, about the budget...
Now, all right, that's right. And then, just in closing, like Blaine said, it's up to you guys. It's up to you guys to listen to opinions by the public, suggestions by the public, and then do something about it. There's no reason why he should be sitting here, this is below his pay grade, to sit here almost for the whole day. You know, it really is.
Well, it makes me feel good, Blaine.
Okay, so, are there any other questions?
Well, you make as much as he does, do you make as much as he does?
Are there any good questions on the budget that were...
You may, who knows? You may make just as much. No more, I'm done. Thank you.
You were talking about, about the Flint Creek Fund, and that you were gonna appropriate, what, $5,000?
What's that?
Yeah, so, uh, we, at a work session...
You wanna buy down another one? Because they're gonna have to, they're gonna do some extra work, and have to put in the contract services and battle rich.
Well, there was the money provided for that, uh...
But this is a project that come up that we didn't know about, and we found something after they lowered the water and got in their deep...
So, that anticipated?
But you want the money to come from the taxpayer, rather, rather than...
No, it's gonna come from the Flint Creek Project.
It's gonna come from the Flint Creek Project, yeah.
So, what's the, what's the balance in the Flint Creek Project?
What's 20,000 dollars, and the whole, and down to 70,000?
$70,000?
After their, after the current contract expense.
So, down to 70?
So, the current contract, all of that is included in the Flint Creek Fund project costs?
There's multiple contractors, one with DOW engineers, they're doing some more battle rich contractors to build the work up here, and Great West is doing the engineering here. There's multiple contractors, one with DOW engineers, they're doing some more battle-rich contractors who do the work up here, and Great West is doing the engineering here.
Well, are there, are there any pending contracts where the dollar amount is gonna exceed the, the remaining balance in the fund?
No, not yet.
But they, I mean, they, they have a budget of 70, 73?
73.
73 is the current budget for the, for that project.
Then on the, the PIL funds, you have not included any appropriations or anticipated budgets, expenditures for the PIL fund?
You have a budget for using PIL funds?
I, I don't understand. What do you mean?
Because we don't know if we're gonna.
Well, you don't know what any of the.
Well, on your budget revenue.
What, what are you guys saying? Are you, do you have anything in the budget for appropriations coming out of the PIL?
Not in 1920, no.
So, so the revenue from the PIL fund has not been included in the budget, both from the standpoint of appropriations or the standpoint of, of source of revenue in order to calculate property taxes?
It's right in.
Revenue's anticipated.
Okay, is it used in the, the tax levy calculation?
That's not, none of that is tax levy. It's all, it's all from that fund, from revenues from the fund.
So it's a source of revenue and it's not included in the budget?
Yeah, the, the revenue is anticipated, but you guys aren't using that in any of your budget, right? Yeah, they're not using that in the budget. So you can have money to fund, but you don't have to budget it?
So if they have made no appropriations, they're effectively exceeding their budget, because they have no budget.
Well, they have a, you're talking about PIL or Flint Creek?
PIL.
PIL.
PIL? No, the emergency would be, would be allowable. Could they, could they say, you know, 200,000 is anticipated? They could. But even then, you're not, I mean, it's hard to anticipate an emergency.
Well, it's hard to anticipate an emergency, but by the same token, there should be a budget in there for emergency appropriation.
They could if they so choose.
So on here, do you know, you've got, it has to show on here how much money you got in PIL funds, right?
It does.
Somewhere. What page is that on? So I can make a notation. And that's on the revenue one?
Like 1.2 or 1.6? I think the balance in the fund is 1.6.
What page is that on?
The revenue is 273,000.
What's my answer?
That was received in June.
What page is that on, Dick, since you know?
Beginning of the year was 1.9, and then you have the expenditures out of that, and the revenues. It came down to 1.6 at the end of the year.
You're talking about PIL?
PIL. Okay, so I wanna see the page.
I thought it was lower than, it went back up to 1.6.
I'm looking for the page number, okay? Jeez.
You have the number?
No, that's what I, that's what I'm looking for, the page number that it's on. It's easier than looking through this whole thing. Because this is.
So it's on page 15 of 20, and the number is 2900 PIL.
2900. And how much does they amount there?
Okay, so the final budget is 1.8.
Final budget or the final balance?
Balance.
Yeah, well, she's got it in here as final budget, but yeah.
So it is, I mean, she has it all budgeted in there?
Yeah, it is. It's a preliminary budget, it's budgeted.
Well, what is it, what are the line items?
There's no line items.
So how is that a budget?
Well, it's over budgeted. This is accounting for the money of the.
It'd be impossible to do a line item on an emergency.
Right. So how much is, that's one, no, I, he, it's 1.8?
1.821.
21. And that's what's in there. Okay.
In the PIL and with budget, right?
Okay.
So she's including that as a source of revenue?
Yeah.
That can be used.
No appropriations.
Because it shows that, it shows the transfers out.
The appropriations, like a zero.
No, it's on the same, okay.
They say in the budget amounts, the 1.8, but they, they don't have it line item.
She just put it as allocated cost and others, it just shows a hundred percent, you know, that it's there. She budgeted the whole thing so we have.
Do you have that? I gave you like that.
So it's allocated so we can use it. Dick?
Who are you talking to?
Come on, do you have it, Dick?
No, he's just trying to, he's just trying to get.
Get your attention.
He's trying to help you out. Just tell him, it's all been budgeted.
It's allocated, I'm trying to tell him, I'm done. What, what, you're saying the revenue has been a budget, and you're saying the, the expenditures are zero?
Yeah, nothing's been expended from, from this current year's budget, correct?
Nothing's been expended, but we're talking about a budget, do you anticipate or project any appropriations that are gonna be made against a PIL fund?
No.
Just emerg, just emergencies that are, yeah, they don't, can't specify.
And any emergencies are gonna come out as an amended budget.
Hold on. So you're considering that any expenditures that come from the PIL fund are emergencies and a period?
Be their decision.
It's our decision. You know, if we need, if we need the money, you know, it's our safety, that's all we have to do. You know, versus going to a bank, we don't have to go to a bank.
So if another fund needs it, then potentially you do a written resolution.
So it's not, still not used as money available for the tax mill levy, okay? So it isn't included in there, therefore the people are being overtaxed.
Well, that's your opinion.
Well, that's the whole purpose of the budget being prepared. It's in order to determine how much taxes are gonna be levied on the people. If you, you should consider all sources of revenue and all sources of expenditure.
This doesn't come from our levy system, it comes from Congress.
Comes from what?
Congress appropriates the PIL. Payment in lieu of taxes is.
They've already sent it to you. You have the money, you have, you received it.
Yep.
So it's available to you for expenditures, services provided by the country.
What you're saying is use it, you're encouraging them to use it instead of certain tax dollars, is that what you're?
Right.
Well, I, whether they use it or not, it seems to me when the money comes in, it should be distributed to the various funds that have budget appropriations. Or used as, as a general, general fund where the total revenues, and that, that's the way you calculate the taxes. The total revenues are used in order to calculate what the property taxes are gonna be.
Some counties do that.
Well, it's either a matter, it's a source of revenue and you should consider it, or you shouldn't. It's either the law or it isn't the law.
No, we consider it, we just not, we don't consider it, we absolutely.
Yeah, so they're, so they're following the law, that's a political, that's a political argument.
It's not their, it's a taxpayer's.
But they, they have the authority to decide where it goes, so whether they hold it basing it savings like you're doing, or appropriating it would be your decision.
Like Galton County uses it to buy all the blue steel mills, they buy everything out of PIL, okay? Other counties save it like we do, but, but Galton County has huge resources, we don't. If we have a, a major flood, a tough situation, the law enforcement, something, we're screwed. We gotta go to a bank. Or then, we have to raise taxes. And PIL is a cushion that allows us not to have to do this.
Look at all the potential disasters that could come away.
A million bucks goes away.
It's not, to me, it's not when you, you know, if you, it's when.
When, exactly.
Well, if, if you use the emergency appropriation, then the alternative is to come up with a mill levy, a tax levy for them. It's not a matter of going out and borrowing money. It's a matter of a tax levy. And then that levy should be, people should be advised of it, and.
We can borrow money too, but you're right, the, the alternative normally is to raise taxes, which we'd rather not do. We don't have to in the situation we're in, but like you said, it could be one of those situations, you know, whoa.
And they're, generally speaking, then it's, yeah, mill levy going to the, the people that ask for the, the funds. So this potentially allows you guys an option, and you wouldn't have to.
To avoid that.
Well, I, I, I don't see where it's your option. Again, it's the people's business and it's their money. And you should, you should be restricted by the limitations assigned by the law.
Well, one of the, one of the obligations of the commission is to decide what's good public policy. We feel that killing PIL to other commissioners, and replace me, man, in fact, feel differently. But we feel like holding it and, and, you know, rainy day or whatever you wanna call it, it's not a slush for, because we don't use it often. It's good public policy. Now, you can disagree with that, but, well, you're not in a position to make that decision.
Well, as far as, I, I would like to talk. I've given, I've given you the floor, do you mind? As far as the PIL, the PIL funds are concerned, I can see what you're doing with it, and I can see what other counties are doing with it. And you check at the end of the year, they've got like nothing. One of the counties, when I looked, I couldn't believe it. They get more in PIL funding and then they have like just a few hundred dollars left in it compared to our county. You know what county that was?
What?
Broadwater County. And we took our PIL funds and we sent it to Broadwater County. That's not good public relations as far as the public here in Granite County.
No, but you're not, they're not giving them out of the situational fair hearing. We owed them money.
No, you didn't owe Broadwater anything.
We were gonna prosecute the crime that occurred in Granite County against our sheriff. Either we had to have it here or we had to pay him to do it. We had to pay the county attorney to do it. You know, he had to bring in witnesses, he had to bring in, there were lab costs, he had, he had, they had actual costs.
Bill, I know the whole thing behind that.
I told you, I'm willing and ready to prosecute it here, but that whole deal was if, if every county prosecuted that one individually, it would, that would really have cost the taxpayers hundreds, yeah, millions. So I guess I don't know the exact dollar amount, but it'd be extra. So there is some judicial efficiency in the way it was handled. I, I don't dispute you saying that, you know, don't think that's why it's used in the fund. But it would have cost the tax dollars, taxpayers in Montana more if we had set the prosecution separate.
Well, from the standpoint of judicial efficiency, then shouldn't it have been, and crossing five different county, county lines, shouldn't it have been something that the Attorney General's Office should have handled?
That's another question that wasn't answered. Don't be galling.
That is a question too. The, the thought was since the deputy was killed there, to let them have the bite of the apple. And I think there's a good argument for that too, that they, they should.
Well, this happened in 2017, right? So I assume the lawyers and the Attorney General's Office all had meetings and decided how this thing was gonna be prosecuted, or?
So there was not meetings, there were emails that went from, from, you know, circulated between all the prosecutors. And I guarantee that the Attorney General's Office was in on those emails. I believe they were, but don't, I'm not gonna check.
Well, didn't the judge consider Harris or whatever his name was mentally incompetent to his damn son?
Yes, he is in the state hospital now, and, yeah, potentially he could be there for his entire life too.
Yeah, but I think that's it as far as the, oh, here we go.
Okay, you, you can follow the same rules. Well, the.
I don't wanna like you. How nice is it?
Well, didn't the incident happen in, what, March of 2017?
Yeah, spring of 2013.
And then you made the agreement to, I, I think on the first one, you didn't specify any dollar amount in there for the, that you, you would provide to them.
Correct. The prosecutor just deferred to Broadwater County as the one prosecutor, so I didn't make, I personally didn't say, and there'll be money coming to you. I didn't make that recommendation.
Okay, then the, the, and you had another budget process at that part, and rather, you didn't appropriate $25,000 for, for the hearing? For the contribution?
No, budgeted right away after the letter.
Not right away, for the fall, it was the next year in the budget process. There was nothing appropriated for the, for the hearing.
So we, we had asked them to let us know when they're ready for it, that was the total request, yeah.
Well, then shouldn't, shouldn't you have budgeted the money in your budget for that?
That was that, I probably should have done that. I didn't know in specificity when they were gonna ask about those funds, so I, but I could have.
You could, you didn't have to.
Yeah.
Well, it's somewhat like a capital expenditure, you don't know specifically how much, you have an estimate of what it is. I would have thought that you would have an estimate of what that should be, and I guess that estimate would be consistent with what the other counties were gonna provide.
I, since I didn't look in the details of expert witnesses and what they were gonna cost, I, I wouldn't have had any idea what that was gonna cost. But could I have looked into budgeting? I guess.
Yeah, well, and here again, isn't part of your budget, isn't there some kind of contribution from the state that reflects the money that the attorney? So in a case like this where you have, affecting five different counties, it would seem to me that the Attorney General's Office should have taken jurisdiction of the thing if it was gonna.
They, in no case will they just come in and say that they're doing it, because they don't wanna step on county attorneys' feet. They'll, I mean, they could, but they'll never, they will never do that unless they feel like the case is totally being mishandled when they come in.
So the thing has been going on for three years and nothing is included in the budget?
Correct.
Okay, that's it.
Resolution will be two ingredients, so they have a, a budget form today and then do the resolution as well.
You got the rest of it, didn't you?
I did. Oh my God.
Yeah, the newspaper's here, he can suffer through this.